Good evening. I am Mary Ann Edwards, Mayor of Temecula, and I would like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. This evening, we're going to have our invocation by City Manager Aaron Adams, which will be followed by the flag salute. So if you'd please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would you please bow your head with me? Dear me Father Lord, we just, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for living in the great city of Temecula. And Lord, we just ask for wisdom and discernment to guide us this evening in the business of the city for the city council. Lord, we, we also lift up our residents and our business owners, Lord, for prosperity and good health in this environment. We also pray for our first responders, Lord, police and fire personnel, just continue to protect them and guide them. And, and of course, our city employees that are out there in the field, in our facilities, doing the good work of the city of Temecula each and every day. And Lord, just have your blessing on this meeting this evening. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Aaron. And if you place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. You may be seated. And Madam City Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Alexander?
I am here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk?
I'm here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
And Mayor Edwards?
I am here. So this evening, we have a presentation. We have a certificate of recognition for Colonel Idia, the Colonel Idia Foundation. And Randy is going to read that for us.
Yes, Madam Mayor. And tonight, the city of Temecula is honored to shine the spotlight on the Cornell and Idia Foundation. The Cornell and Idia Foundation is dedicated to funding and delivering charitable services, assisting in furthering education, and lending a helping hand in promoting and providing financial support for indigent underserved individuals. The foundation offers two scholarship programs, one for college and one for notary public classes, which give preference to Temecula residents. The foundation has bestowed scholarships to students, supplied printers and papers to schools, extended aid to indigenous people, provided food to over 500 children, and donated more than 2,000 pounds of clothing, shoes, blankets, toys, and school supplies to those in needs. The foundation received the President's Volunteer Service Award, the highest civil award for volunteerism in the United States for their commitment to strengthening our nation and communities through volunteer service. And the city of Temecula is proud to recognize this foundation for receiving this distinguished award. And we thank them for embodying the Temecula Cares approach through their generosity and dedicated service to the community. And I know we have the foundation's representatives with us tonight.
We do. Hi, I see you waving at me. Would any of you like to speak? We'd love to have you speak. If you just want to unmute, there, I see. So it's Maria.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, if you have, if you have your phone on or two computers, I've done that before too. So one of them needs to go off. There you go. Hi.
Hi. Well, actually, I prepared a small statement if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Well. Okay. Hi, ladies and gentlemen, Madam Mayor, and members of the Temecula City Council. My name is Dr. Maria Kassandra Idia Cornell, and I'm here tonight with my parents. My father, Tomassel Isar Cornell, and my mother, Marissa Idia Cornell. And on behalf of my sister and co-founder, Mia Kyla Idia Cornell, who can't be here tonight. Our family has long been patrons and business owners of the city of Temecula. And our family believes in giving back and paying forward. So when COVID-19 changed the lives of countless around the world, our family wanted to do their part and help change the lives of others for the better. So we established the Cornell and Idia Foundation, a small, humble, but growing nonprofit in 2020 to do our share to help make a difference. So we'll be celebrating, actually, our one-year anniversary very soon. And thanks to the generosity of our donors from Temecula and from all over the world briefly, we have not only been able to meet, but also surpassed all of our goals. Given the Temecula 2021 theme of Temecula Cares, and actually, the recent proclamation of May being Asian American Pacific Islander National Heritage Month, our family really wants to thank our community for their support and the city of Temecula for acknowledging the Cornell and Idia Foundation. We also invite everyone who's going to be watching this and all of you to visit our website, if you haven't already, coronellandiafoundation.org. If you want to help us join, make us, and make a difference in the future of, of furthering of education and lending a helping hand for underserved individuals. More than half of our volunteers and donations, both monetary and in kind, have actually come from the city of Temecula. So we're hoping to mobilize more Temeculans in our cause for the future. So thank you again so much. This recognition from Temecula really means so much.
Well, thank you, and happy anniversary. Does anyone else want to?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, it's wonderful that you did this in a, in a time that was so difficult for so many people. And I think we know education is everything. You know, the more you can learn, the higher you can go and the better you'll do. So thank you on behalf of all those recipients and all the residents of Temecula and the business owners who will benefit by the workforce experience that our kids receive through training and through college education. So thank you. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We get to move on to our board and commission reports. And first up, I have the planning commission with John Tlesio. Mr. Tlesio, neighbor. Hey there.
Turn on my switches.
Got it.
Slide, please.
Looks beautiful.
Please change the slide.
The fountain looks good. I take it that's not your first slide. There it is.
No, we can leave that one there.
Yeah, looks great.
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, from your planning commission. The meeting on May 19th was, was a light one, but I think you'll agree it was an important one. On that meeting, we commit, we, the commission revived, reviewed the draft fiscal year 2022, 2026. Capital improvement budget sheets were consistently with the general plan. The commission voted four to zero to make a determination that the proposed fiscal year 2022 to 2026 capital improvement plan is in conformance with the general plan. The second item was due to the re-excit, resignation of Commissioner Yeoman from the planning commission. The commission selected a commissioner member to fill Commissioner Yeoman's seat on the general plan update subcommittee. Commissioner Truly Trejo was selected for that position and will serve on the subcommittee with the Commissioner Watts. And beyond that, we had nothing. It was a light meeting.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you for all your hard work. And congratulations to Linay Truly Trejo for being selected to serve on the subcommittee. I know she'll do a great job. So thank you, John.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Chairman Tiffany Baker for our Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Commission. And you guys have been busy.
Yes, good evening. How are you, Madam Mayor?
Good.
And members of the commi, um, council. So you just call them commissioners. Good evening. I'm here to report. I'm happy to report. I gotta put on my glasses. This is where Mayor Edwards.
Yeah.
So the commission held its monthly meeting on May 13, 2021. The commission received a proclamation, an overview of a proclamation at May 11th council meeting for MSJC Asian Alliance as recipients of the proclamation and saw a short video from NASA, which was amazing. I really liked the video, celebrating Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The commission also received a departmental presentation from Riverside Sheriff's Office. The topics we discussed included education, training, recruitment, community engagement programs, community relations, and community policing. There was a lot of thoughtful discussion that we had about reporting crimes, specifically hate crimes, reporting officer misconducts, and RSO transparency webpage, which was very informative to have to. Riverside County has a transparency page, and all of its policies are on that page for the community to review, which was very informative for us to know that it was there. We talked about the use of body cameras, hiring background checks, the use of force. We talked about CBAC and mental health professional benefits and the liaisons with different communities of colors, and specifically, the needs, special needs registry. We really, really like that, that, that is just fantastic, that special needs registry. Captain Zach Hall and Lieutenant Mark Regali, they did a great job presenting to us, and we were so appreciative. And they were really, you could tell they really care about their jobs and their community. So it was just a wonderful presentation there. And then I have a couple more to report on. We've been really busy, like you said.
I've been busy. I knew that.
And the commission received the overview of the Quality of Life Master Plan Update and Processes from Matt Peters. And then Commissioner Denise Wilson will be representing the Ready Commission on the Blue Ribbon Committee. Congratulations, Denise. And then the commission will begin working on the draft equity value for next month. And we lastly want to say, on behalf of, um, all of us on today being the one-year anniversary of Mr. Floyd's death, we really want to thank the council for responding to a life loss and uphurting people. And we unanimously want to say, thank you. It is our honor to serve our city. And thank you for having the courage as a council to do such groundbreaking work. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And may we all just say a prayer for the Floyd family and all of the families that's been affected, including our own community. And we're so excited to move forward together. Thank you, guys, for having us.
Well, we're, we are equally thankful for you. You're making a difference already. And I know, are you surprised at how busy you are?
You know, I am really personally be, being, I'm growing because sometimes progress is not fast. It is slow but steady. And what this commission is, is steady. And we appreciate the council's dedication to this commission and our city. We, we, we are the leaders and we are grateful.
So we're all, we're all pulling in the same direction. And we know what our goals are. And you are obviously diligently working towards your goals. And you know, I just want to thank city staff because you guys have a steep learning curve. Just because there are so many different areas and the city does so many different things. And I know that staff has worked very, very hard to, you know, try and expose you to as many departments and programs. And sometimes it might always be easy to say, well, why do we need to learn about this? But it readily, you readily realize how everything works together at the city to help each department, you know, achieve their goals. And so the goals that we achieve are, are on behalf of every Temecula resident. And you are making a huge impact. And we're very, very grateful to all of you.
And we thank you all for the opportunity. And we thank you all. We, my commissioners, they want me to all send a unanimous for the opportunity to serve.
But you tell them, received, and, and, and you just pass it right back to them.
Thank you so much. You guys have a wonderful evening.
Hey, you too. Thanks, Tiffany.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, we have our public safety report from Captain Zachary Hall. Captain Hall, how are you?
Very well. How are you?
Good.
Wait for the PowerPoint to come up here.
It is.
Okay, here we go. Calls for service, year-to-date, we're at 28,245. Month, April, 6,755. There's our Part One crimes. This is again, this is what our reporting to DOJ. This is where the stats come from. These are the year-to-date, uh, 2021 compared to year-to-date, 2019. As I pointed out last time, skipping 2020 due to the pandemic changed our numbers and made them uncomparable. Total violent crimes, murder, one. Forcible rape, seven. Robbery, 21. Aggravated assault, 91. Comparisons are to the right. On the total property crimes, your burglary is 134. Motor vehicle theft, 125, with 88 recovered. Your thefts, 608, and zero arson's. These are the updated Metro Team stats for April. You can see the Metro Team in just in Old Town made 26 felony arrests, 140 misdemeanor arrests, arrested 12 people for driving under the influence, issued 354 traffic and parking citations, and conducted 65 business and bar checks. Here's our traffic team. Total citations, 958. 665 of them were hazard citations, 111 non-hazardous citations, and 182 were parking. Traffic collisions, 61 total, 24 injury, 37 non-injury, and 36 DUI arrests. And that wraps up the public safety report.
Thank you. It's really beneficial to us to be able to see the numbers and compare from now, we're looking at two years ago. Obviously, last year was an anomaly. So I think as we, you know, reach the end of the year, you know, that it's going to be apparent. I don't see a huge increase in crime overall. So I think from what we're hearing from the rest of the country, Temecula's faring very well. Would you, would you agree?
I agree. And, and really, in this section, we put the most weight, obviously, on violent crime. Right? Not to say that property crime's not important, but there is a dynamic in Temecula that drives property crime, right? We push for reporting, like any community meeting we go to, any public forum. We see, you know, if you see something, say something. Reporting drives deployment. It drives statistics. Without, with bad data, you know, we get bad outcomes. So we ask for reporting. The mall, a lot of these are property crimes. You know, include like shoplifting, a car getting broken into. So your mall drives a lot of that, right? Some of the stuff in Old Town drives some of that. And Pachanga, having a resort casino in town will drive some of your Part One crimes. If there's anything in here you'd like me to add or you want a comparison on something else, I can add that too. You'll see in this report, I took out the average response times just because with, within a few fractions of a second, the time didn't really change in a month. So I figured I'd put it in there quarterly or every six months because then it shows at least maybe a half minute to a minute change in some of the categories. But they just fluctuate, you know, that much. It's averages of, you know, 7,000 calls.
Well, and our Priority One calls have an excellent response time. So as long as we don't see a fluctuation, I think that's great.
Yeah, and I'd like, again, I'd like to point out on the response times, the way we calculate response times, which I believe, our organization believes, is the only way to do it, is from the time the resident calls 911. It's not drive time. You know, it's the time the resident picks up the phone, dials 911, and a deputy arrives, you know, on your doorstep.
Well, I think that's fair because that's how long they're waiting and they're anticipating. So I think that's a, a very accurate way to do it. So Stu, you have your hand up.
Yeah, so, um, I noticed the traffic, not the parking citations. What, what's the catalyst from? I noticed there was a huge difference between a year ago and, and right now. So what, what are they being cited for?
I'd have to mine that exact data out, but we get a lot of people calling about, say, handicap parking, parking in fire lanes, street sweeping, things of that nature.
Okay.
But if, if you, I can break them down for the next meeting so you can kind of get an overall picture of where a majority of parking citations go.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious. So yeah, if you could do that, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else? Everybody, anybody want, need any more information that we're not getting? All right. Thank you, Captain Hall.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, moving on to public comments. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have approximately 15 public comments. They are all on non-agenda items except for one, which is on consent calendar items. So we'll go ahead and read that all together.
Okay, I'll go ahead and, and read the statement. "A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. For all public hearing or business items on the agenda, each speaker is limited to five minutes. For this meeting, public comments may be submitted and read into the record pursuant to the important notice provided at the top of this agenda." Okay, Madam City Clerk, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first speaker is Bob and Laura Quaid. "As residents of Temecula for the last 18 years, my wife and I are pleased and proud of the overall job our city leaders have done to shape our community into one in which we are blessed to live. That said, we have a few comments regarding statements we heard from council members in the last several council meetings that are disturbing and make us question the mindset and priorities of our current council. First, the implied accusations of Asian racism against Councilmember Jessica Alexander or anyone else referring to the COVID-19 as the China virus, including former President Trump, is misguided as China is not a race and such comments are ignorant and divisive to the council. Any reference to the country of China is only to identify its known source of origin, just like food poisoning or sunburn refers to the source of these medical infirmities. The evil Chinese Communist government and not its people are responsible for unleashing this unholy virus upon the world for the purpose of striking a blow to capitalism and accelerating its form of communist socialism, fear, control, and dependence of the people on government for their existence. We have seen over the last 12 months how quickly it has already affected our country with the millions of Americans still living in fear as represented by the continued mask-wearing everywhere and millions more fully dependent on government for their welfare as represented by trillions of American rescue spending. We have seen our own strong independent city bowing to Governor Newsom's pandemic mandates in the hopes of receiving another 14 million in federal COVID recovery aid. Are we really that desperate? Not according to City Manager Adams' comments at the last council meeting where he implied the city was in great financial shape. Second, the city has done a great job at the Duck Pond memorializing the fallen military and more recently, Temecula loved ones lost due to the China virus. We now call on the council to take another step in the Temecula Cares campaign and Remembrance of Lives launch back in February and to fund a, and to fund a memorial to all the unburned children whose lives were stolen by the ungodly and reprehensible abortion procedures performed in our city over the years. And that continues at one unnamed abortion clinic. It would show that the city does care about and remember all human lives created in God's image, born and unborn. And for each additional white flag that is erected at city cost, we implore the council to make a similar monetary contribution to birth choice of Temecula that is working to save the lives of the unborn through its pregnancy counseling program. Show the people to Temecula that a saved life is just as precious as a lost life. Thank you for your consideration." The next speaker is Bob Cow. It has also been called Wuhan. It has also been called Wuhan where it originated and the CCP virus by freedom-loving Chinese people that I know. The swine flu originated in pigs. The bird flu originated in birds. Ebola originated near the Ebola River in Africa. There are California variants of the China virus that are named after California. Why can't we call this virus like we do other viruses by the name from where it came from? I think the press enterprise is tied in with other large newspapers that are tied in with the Chinese Communist Party. It only makes sense. When all news is censored to allow China to get away with murder everywhere, including its people in Hong Kong, then we should consider what they have done to us as an act of war. And those who do not recognize this are treasonous or cowards of the terrible system that the CCP is setting up. The press enterprise and those who write these types of articles are useful idiots of the control state. The next speaker is Rick Reese. "During the May 11th city council meeting, Mayor Pretend Matt Ron unjustly maligned fellow council member Jessica Alexander for her reference to the COVID-19 virus as China virus. Matt Ron is simply parroting Chinese Communist Party talking points while also failing to note that in late 2019 and early 2020, the virus was routinely called Wuhan virus and the China virus throughout our American establishment and major news media outlets. It was only after the Beijing-approved talking point by the Chinese, by the China Xinwao news and intense behind-the-scenes lobbying by Chinese communists that the narrative moved from Wuhan virus and Chinese virus to COVID-19. The CCP regime-driven messaging was done to deny the Chinese government's culpability and responsibility to the world for the release and subsequent cover-up of the virus from Wuhan, China. The CCP went even further by buying off the United Nations World Health Organization to advance this narrative that the virus emanated from somewhere other than China. It's been widely reported that the WHO has lost lots of credibility as it now seems to be a mere puppet carrying water for the CCP regime. Ron seems to have carelessly forgotten this recent history as to the origins of the virus along with the subsequent and continued cover-up and public manipulation of the Orwellian Chinese government. Meanwhile, the CCP mafia continues a systemic program of persecution, repression, rape, torture, and genocide against Chinese Christians, Muslims, Uighurs, Balan Gong practitioners, Tibetan Buddhists, and various political descendants up to and including the once-free people of Hong Kong. Why is Matt Ron carrying water for this psychopathic Chinese Communist regime? Perhaps the illustrious Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Commission could come up with some recommendations for Temecula so that the city can properly distance itself from the hateful and brutal tyrants holding the Chinese people hostage. Suffice it to say that this current version of the People's Republic of China is ill-suited to participate in any sister cities' programs with our city of Temecula. And suffice it also to say that one city council member has reminded everyone of the Cold War term "useful idiot" often attributed to Vladimir Lenin by demonstrating his susceptibility to promote, to promoting Chinese communist propaganda. Matt Ron owes an apology to Jessica Alexander. In the same vein, Councilmember Axuan also rather ignorantly pontificated that a governor's dictat compelling Californians to wear a mask is not a civil rights issue. 60 years ago, certain governors issued other dictates compelling citizens to sit in certain areas or access to certain public facilities based upon race. When considering that our current California governor has issued a variety of edicts that have been ruled as unconstitutional by the US Supreme Court five times, let's repeat that again, five times. Then the only logical conclusion is that Gavin Newsom has been violating the rights of millions of Californians through these dictates." Next three minutes. The next speaker is Jim Horn. And he was responding to the comments that I just read into the record from Rick Reese stating, "Well-stated, a week ago, Dr. Ben Carson commented on Fox Business TV that it is possible, if not probable, that millions of Americans are inherently immune to the Wuhan plague, but Fauci's NIH has neglected, refused to look into this." The next comment is Jason Lund. "Mary Ann Edwards has been elected to various offices in the Temecula Valley for decades, having served in many roles. She, above all the elected officials serving the city of Temecula, knows the necessity of auditing all funds dispersed by any and all city agencies, officers, or employees. This is a GAAP principle used to ensure the public trust is kept. Mary Ann Edwards also knows the hard-working citizens of Temecula want transparency for every dollar spent of the $14 million the city of Temecula is receiving from the state. Therefore, it is imperative such an audit be employed to ensure no nepotism, backroom deals are unfair or illegal bidding or contacting processes were enabled in the sudden and immediate spending of the funds received. This is even more important as the funds were dedicated for COVID relief. And it appears that save the city council, the city employees, the city manager and his wife, and all vendors or suppliers to the city of Temecula, no relief was to be had. This means the citizens' demand is even more pressing that any inference of non-competitive bidding or enrichment is negated by such a practice. The question is, why is the city council and Mayor Edwards specifically skirting this issue and avoiding it so adamant, adamantly? Please let us know the answer or answers." The next speaker is Amanda Perez. "Mary Ann Edwards, you, you, your signed oath of office states that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States. You have failed to uphold your oath of office, and you should step down immediately. Furthermore, Mary Ann Edwards, the hard-working citizens of Temecula want transparency for every dollar spent of the $14 million the city of Temecula is receiving from the state. It is a complete dereliction of your duty as mayor to continue to not be forthcoming with your constituents. Mary Ann Edwards, as you continue your charade of pretending to help the people of the city of Temecula, we will continue to hold you accountable in your failure to uphold your oath of office to support and defend the Constitution. A very concerned citizen." The next is Chris Skinner. The ADA undoubtedly aims to achieve a noble goal to allow all Americans equal access to public accommodations by prohibiting discrimination based on a disability. Temecula City Hall that has been locked down for fourteen months to all residents of Temecula that need to conduct business, including attending city council meetings in person. The very people you have locked out of the building are the very people that pay for the building. Marianne Edwards, you have made false comments about upholding your oath as a public servant to the American citizens. Denying citizens their inalienable rights because you're choosing to follow a mandate for financial gain is in direct violation of our constitutional rights and your oath to office. You are making fourteen million dollars more important than the rights of the people. Did you bother to hold a town hall where all business owners could have a voice in deciding if they wanted to be closed? Security guards have no legal authority to enforce masks or temperature checks. These are not laws and not a law that you can enforce. You very clearly stated there is no mask mandate in Temecula, which means the City Hall of Temecula, a public building, is a direct contradiction to your statement and must be open to the public immediately. The CDC guidance, again, is not law as they do not make laws. The CDC linked directly from your website, which clearly states the following. The following categories of people are exempt from the requirement to wear a mask. A person with a disability who cannot wear a mask or cannot safely wear a mask for reasons related to the disability. A person for whom wearing a mask would create a risk to workplace health, safety, or job duty as determined by the workplace assessment. You are in violation of California Penal Code 2052, which is practicing medicine without a license. Telling your constituents that we, the people, shall wear a mask and be temperature-checked before being allowed to enter a public building we pay for is a direct violation of California Code 51B, the Americans with Disabilities Act, OSHA, and many other California state laws. You have made it clear that you are choosing money over the rights of the people and that is a direct violation of your oath of office. Obtaining government funds to fill your coffers is not in the best interest of citizens of this community who have lost everything. I have now placed you on notice to step down from your office as the city mayor for the following reasons. Mayor Marianne Edwards, you have failed to uphold your oath to office and should step down immediately. Marianne Edwards, your signed oath of office states that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and you have failed to uphold your oath to office. Marianne Edwards, the hard-working citizens of Temecula want transparency for every dollar spent of the fourteen million dollars the city of Temecula is receiving from the government. Mayor Marianne Edwards, you would rather have your constituents comply to the tourniquet edicts set forth by the federal and state government than to uphold your oath of office to defend the Constitution. I demand that you step down immediately for violation of your oath of office. The next speaker is Cecy B. Holmes, but it's just concerned resident now paying more attention. Thank you for your efforts on behalf of Temecula. I'd like to leave it there but can't without relaying this. I just went to watch a city council meeting for the first time when another search result came up. Temecula City Council Mask Holds. You know what I saw next? The media and Stephen Colbert ridiculing our town, our mayor, and a council member. He even targeted Jessica Alexander by name and put his own words to our mayor's expressions and more. Everyone knows his unvarnished political bias and he even admitted that he was attacking what he calls conservative activists as masks hold. His attacks on two distinguished women representing our town were reprehensible but not a surprise when you consider his agenda. His portrayal was enlightening though because it focused on the fact that while Ms. Alexander was expressing her feelings, the council was clearly trying to distance themselves from her in Colbert's words, deciding to get off the bus. What I later saw when I watched the actual city council meeting was the council throwing Ms. Alexander under the bus all because divisive entities decided that it's racist for a white-colored person to relate her feelings to the feelings of a person of another color. That's called empathy, not racism. What a disappointment it was to see Matt Ron and Zach Shuen use the abusive coverage against her instead of condemning the obvious political ploy. They actually used their positions of power, counsel duration, to put her down on yet another public and official forum. And where are the feminists? Well, here is one, and I have more to share based on subsequent discussions with other concerned residents of our town. These are not the people who send emails, making phone calls, or carrying signs to make their voices heard, but they are every bit as important as the loud crowd. So I let them know I would get up the courage to write you in hopes you were hearing our quiet voices. As I type here our quiet voices, I realize you won't be hearing our voices at all. That right now, we can't even have a voice. We have someone else doing a fine job but having to read in monotone, devoid of expression or even inflection. And as one email drowns into the next, it causes people's pleas to be reduced to more of a cause for eye-rolling. It's like being portrayed as the adult in a Charlie Brown cartoon. I say that not to get into current restrictions but to call attention to the fact that residents are being negatively impacted in more ways than you may realize. The next speaker is Kiki S. Jessica Alexander is not in my district, so I didn't know much about her until recently. But what I discovered is that she is speaking with a needed perspective for me and many others like me who according to our own doctor's advice, should not wear a mask or anything else that lessens oxygen intake. But we must wear it in order to do what everyone else can do, to just be part of society and not segregated. For a year, we have been seriously compromising our health for others who aren't at nearly the same risk while seeing anyone who takes an educated stand against it be targeted and attacked. Do you have any idea how many of us there are? Probably not because it doesn't fit the narrative. Where is the common sense or common decency that I'm now learning is not so common after crosspaths with more than one council member during this time and through my mask chose to express the things I appreciate about our town? That's the Temecula way. But what you haven't been able to notice is that I get choked up and I'm unable to say what I, my family, and my neighbors have really been going through. So you talk as if it's not so bad, but it's worse than you must realize. Real damage is being done on so many levels and you could choose to have compassion for those struggling instead of being condescending like claiming to be the know-it-all of science and lecturing intelligent conscientious residents about compliance. By the way, that's Socialism 101, and I plainly heard Matt Ron and Zach Shuen do their best to push it, whether they know it or not, even comparing this mandate to actual laws that aren't even relevant. Those who have escaped it can plainly see it and that socialism, communism, Marxism is more dangerous than anything. Don't feel bad if you haven't recognized it yourself. It's designed to be insidious and just do this, just do that. It's just for two weeks. It's for the greater good. Trust the government as they silence you for having questions. And by all means, go along to get along. It's just a little longer until the next mandate. So please don't accommodate us into socialism, etc. That's the reason for all of the pushback you're receiving. And instead of seeing it as the same narrative that you're tired of hearing, here it is, a strong consensus of your residents trying to warn you before you find yourself realizing that it's too late and you are responsible for helping tear the fabric of freedom while claiming to uphold the Constitution. Please try to understand that, and if you can't, then at least don't criticize or ostracize those that absolutely do understand. I'm probably out of time, so I will write next time about my personal one-on-one conversation with one of the greatest civil rights activists and what she told me about racism. According to her, the ones who criticized Jessica Alexander are the true racists for fears of attacks and doxing. I am withholding my name for now. The next speaker is Gary Nelson. I think I understand how this is working now. You are the pimps, the businesses, and citizens in Temecula are the prostitutes in Sacramento is the John. The John is offering the pimps fourteen million dollars in exchange for controlling the prostitutes who have no say whatsoever. One out of five of the pimps believes this is wrong and voted against it. Four out of the five, however, voted for this arrangement and the prostitutes are stuck with it. The mayor said last meeting, "There is no guarantee the pimps will ever get the money." Great, like that makes the prostitutes feel better. And there is also no guarantee the cities who are not staying closed will not get their money. So that means there is a very high probability the prostitutes are being sacrificed for nothing. Please understand if Temecula does not get the fourteen million dollars, then council voted to stay shut for nothing. Voted to stay shut down for nothing. And if any city that did not stay shut down gets money, then this also proves council was wrong. That means council has a very high probability of being wrong. Also, council members' ethics are out the window. You have a barber shop owner who employed many people for many years vote to keep those workers shut down and unemployed against their wishes. So much for their years of service and the relationship they thought they had with him. And we have a mayor who encourages her town to open when she is out in the community. She even states such vocally, except for every other Tuesday night at 7:00 PM. For those few hours, the hours that matter the most, she votes to stay shut down in case the pimps in Sacramento are watching Channel 3. Councilmember morals, ethics, and decency are out the window. Four out of five council members are not voting on behalf of their constituents. And now the prostitutes are angry and wanting new pimps who will set them free, and we look forward to the next elections. We got to drain the swamp. The next speaker is Sonia Perez. Elected servant Mayor Marianne Edwards, you have broken your oath to office and you must step down immediately. Your signed oath of office reads as follows. Oath or affirmation of allegiance for public officers and employees, State of California, County of Riverside, City of Temecula. The execution of this oath is required by Article 20, Section 3 of the Constitution of the State of California. Marianne Edwards do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Subscribed and sworn to before me this 12th day of December 2006. Marianne Edwards, you took allegiance to defend the Constitution and for the past fourteen months, the citizens have witnessed you violate your oath of office and we, the people, are demanding your resignation. The next speaker is Ariella Brar. Mayor Marianne Edwards, you have failed to uphold your oath to office and should step down immediately. Marianne Edwards, your signed oath of office states that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and you have failed to uphold your oath to office. Marianne Edwards, the hard-working citizens of Temecula want transparency for every dollar spent of the fourteen million dollars the city of Temecula is receiving from the state. Mayor Marianne Edwards, you would rather have your constituents comply to the tourniquet edicts set forth by the federal government than to uphold your oath to office to defend the Constitution. The next speaker is Suzanne Lane. Mayor Marianne Edwards, the citizens of Temecula want transparency for every dollar spent of the fourteen million dollars the city of Temecula is receiving from the state. It appears that the people are not benefiting one bit from that money. It is dirty money that has been the motive for keeping us oppressed for the past fourteen months. No more. The people have the right to earn a living. This is still a free country regardless of the evil that is trying to destroy us. Why are you a willing party to the tourniquet treatment of the hard-working people of Temecula? Unfortunately, your actions confirm that you would rather have your constituents comply to the tourniquet edicts set forth by the federal government than to uphold your oath of office to defend the Constitution. You signed an oath of office that states you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States. This is the supreme law of the land. You have failed to uphold your oath to office. You need to recognize this and step down immediately. The next speaker is PJ in Temecula. Good evening, council and mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Look, at this point, is it even worth belaboring the point of what's at stake here? The damage is already done. The noise is already deafening. The councilwoman has compared the plight of being forced to attend a meeting from the cozy confines of a well-appointed office and cushy chair to that of someone struggling to survive in a racially biased and violent society and daring to risk her life to fight it. Jessica Alexander will never, I mean, never understand the ridiculousness of her statement. She will never own up to the fact that she insulted not only the true heroic actions of Rosa Parks but millions who have benefited from her single brave action. She will never understand it, but we understand. We understand that she is unfit for the seat she holds. We understand that she committed what can only be described as the dirtiest campaign in city history in order to obtain the seat. We understand that her abhorrent behavior was rewarded. That part is on us as a society. The local gadfly circle around her in support twisting themselves into pretzels to defend her and vilify anyone who dares demand accountability from her. Temecula has its very own Marjorie Taylor Greene. Have we ever been this proud? Perhaps for an encore, Jessica will compare mask-wearing to the Holocaust and begin stalking fellow city council members in the hallways at City Hall. There has and will always be a radical fringe section of the Republican Party that falsely believes that doing God's work gives them license to lie, cheat, and slander within our communities. That's never going to go away. But now we have outside agitators, Reed, Marietta residents looking to market themselves and their for-profit church by shoveling white evangelical Christian privilege and fear-based preachings into the record. We have fake constitutional experts who are really just flag code violating New Balance and George wearing sidewalk jockeys threatening other members of the dais for having the guts to stand up and call out the lies and misbehavior that is unbecoming of our city. No matter how small and insignificant they are, they must be called out and pushed back into the fringe where they belong or at least across the city's border, please. The next speaker is Candace Keller. I think you are taking this ready thing a bit too far with regards to your recent social media posts. The city of Temecula's latest Facebook post about the summer swim lessons only shows Asian and African-American children in the pool photo. That does not seem very inclusive. #ReverseDiscrimination. The next speaker is Ms. Miller. Our precious earth calls us to take care of our actions before the planet is less inhabitable. It is so much drier than usual at this time. There aren't even any golden California poppies. It wasn't the lack of rain. It is the lack of moisture has been drawn out of the earth and left parched soil. This can cause a loss of the balance of species. Following a path of less consumption, curtailing construction, and frivolous entertainment with fossil-fueled vehicles will prolong habitation and increase the health of the biosphere. Temecula has stood against development projects before. The Alter Condominiums was postponed for several years, but not forever like it needs to be. This council is trying to bring back downtown as a livable community and destroying the mountain lion and cheperal habitat. Those condos will be unaffordable and could never generate enough business for downtown specialty shops. On weekends, Temecula is crowded with people. You don't need to boost your downtown. You are driving people away. No one wants to come to Temecula due to the traffic pollution and heat, according to my surveys. And that is the last thing people want, is the wildlife corridor infected with buildings. They want to see wild habitat while walking in Old Town on the mountain ridge, not rooftops and pollution. This wind in the afternoon is much more intense than in the past and concreting more open spaces will continue the increase in velocity. The sports parks are challenged to play in the afternoon. If that bothers you, then jump up at this council and demand all projects stopped or you lose two to three hours in the afternoon of balltime. So removing more open spaces, fields, forests, pouring a hot sheet of concrete is causing many issues, including precluded sports. We are here to oppose number nine and number 10 on the consent calendar called the Aurora Pot expansion of over 700 homes. There will be demonstrations against this project plus petitions to sign. So everyone join in and sign against allowing the passage of the current track maps of Summer Bend to be approved. Quit allowing this council to think they can decide against your wishes. So we don't accept the 700 homes designed for Summer Bend or the road nightmares for the future. The track maps associated with Aurora Pot expansion could be up to 2,100 homes, all flooding cars around wine country and ruining the gentle Mediterranean climate where grapes thrive. The probable reason this is being passed now is because people will be able to attend face-to-face meetings soon and the council doesn't want people coming into meetings to oppose this project. However, we will stand strong and follow you meeting to meeting. Who could buy these homes in these difficult times of economic insecurity? People fleeing their nations due to the occupation of America in their lands or meddling in foreign affairs, or refugees from the terrible cold weather on the East Coast that caused many to come here and pay the high price of California homes. Madam Mayor, that's three minutes on that consent calendar item, and then there's one last item. For consent, it's also from Ms. Miller. We oppose the approval of the track maps of number nine. We oppose the approval of the track maps of number nine and ten on the consent calendar, which is the Aurora Pot expansion. She's actually submitted two comments on the same, so that was three minutes for that particular comment. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comments.
All right, thank you. That means we are moving on to city council reports. And if I could see hands up, somebody has, Zach, you have, don't you have slides or video or something? And Stu, I'll get you in a second.
No, so I don't have a slide, so if someone does and they want to go, go right ahead.
Anybody have slides? No, video, no. So, no, go ahead, Zach.
Okay.
And then we'll get Stu.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Never been so refreshing to hear from Ms. Miller again, so thanks for Ms. Miller joining us. You know, I'm just going to provide some general comments tonight. As I sit here and I listen to the comments this evening, and quite honestly, for the past several months, I'm just astonished at the negativity and the hatred some in our community have shown. You know, sure, sure, these are trying times, obviously. We're enduring a global pandemic with massive amounts of mistrust and ignorance. We began this pandemic, though, with open hearts and a sense of community. Our neighborhood rallied around one another, we supported each other, we checked in on our neighbors, and we just genuinely cared for each other. As time passed, though, some people became frustrated and their voices seemed to grow louder. Was everything managed perfectly? Absolutely not. But it wasn't a dumpster fire either. You know, at the local level here in Temecula, we worked around the clock to support our families and our businesses. We quickly adapted to a business life that was outdoors and we worked directly to support our families with the complement of virtual events and family-based activities. We funded and directed financial grant assistance to businesses impacted by the pandemic. City staff should be commended for their tireless work for our community. And we should all be proud of the work we accomplished over the last year. So, so much of what we did and continue to do directly supports our entire community. We want everyone to thrive. I mean, that's the goal, right? So this leads me back to the goals of our community. A thriving, robust, and diverse community ready to succeed on all fronts. But I'm not hearing that from some of the comments tonight. Instead, I'm hearing about prostitutes and Johns and pimps and the Chinese Communist Party and one person in our community circulating graphics that were treasonous and traitors and calling the sheriffs to have us arrested. I'm hearing about Gavin Newsom and edicts and socialism and dictats. Dictat, mind you, is not what we're experiencing with respect to public health orders in a word that's quite honestly often used by communist leaders around the globe. Now, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I certainly felt it was important to at least acknowledge it. If I'm to try to understand another person's perspective, you know, I must actively listen. And that holds true for all of us and elected officials in general. Something we should also, that holds true, is a baseline understanding of how we treat each other, what is considered professional behavior and how we represent the city of Temecula in official capacity and how we spend public funds. Those should be our top priorities. Now, I've met with and often speak to countless residents regarding all sorts of issues that concern them. From skate parks to airplane noise and potholes to code violations. And not once has the conversation devolved into some of the thoughts that we heard tonight. Am I missing something? Is there a groundswell of concern regarding the public comments tonight? In my experience, I haven't heard any of those thoughts outside of the handful of public comments during the meetings as of late. And let me be clear, though, and I'm sure my words will be scrutinized and taken out of context. I'm not dismissing these public comments, but rather putting them into perspective. Rational thinking should tell us that twelve, twenty-five, seventy, even a hundred comments don't genuinely represent the entire population of one hundred and fourteen thousand people in our city. If we're not being rational, then let's do the math. So you may be wondering, what does a community want? And at our core, we want security, prosperity, and a community where we feel valued. Everyone in our community should feel safe, have an opportunity to prosper, and feel valued and perhaps more importantly, feel comfortable adding value. These core desires bubble up in every interaction that we have as elected officials. So on the one-year anniversary of the murder of George Floyd, which happened in front of the world, quite a lot has changed over the past year in America. We still have a long way to go, but a lot has changed. Our community is no different. Our community spoke and we listened. We had hours upon hours of constructive dialogue, reflection, learning, and ultimately, action. The city of Temecula unanimously approved a resolution denouncing racism in all its forms. We unanimously approved a ready initiative and a ready commission. Just last meeting, we issued a proclamation for National Asian American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander Heritage Month, a first for the city of Temecula. We'll be celebrating Juneteenth for the first time as well next month. We will continue to grow and to learn. I bring all this up to help me and the community digest what it truly means to be a community. We want everyone to thrive, right? That's the goal. That's a statement, but it's also a question. So moving forward, I'd like us to be mindful of the entire community. We're hearing from some residents right now and some people that do not even live in the city. A vast majority of Temecula residents love our city and are proud of the path we're on. As we emerge from the pandemic, we will once again see our friends and neighbors at parades, concerts in the park, the rod run, all of the wonderful events that make our community such a beautiful place to live. We will see people inside City Hall once again making public comments in person. Ms. Miller, come back, we can't wait to see you. In a couple weeks, when life returns to our pre-pandemic norms, what sort of public comments will we hear? Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Stu?
All right, well, I had the pleasure a week ago to attend the American Patriot Band. For those of you who don't know, it's a local band here. But what they, they've done is they've created the American Patriot Music Project. And so what it does is they work with veterans who are suffering from PTSD or sometimes not even suffering, but they're just looking for a vent, something to move them past the combat world that they were in for so long. And so it was really a cool event because the American Patriot Band actually played. And, but then they actually presented four guitars that these soldiers actually made. They made them themselves, but, you know, to see their faces, because I took part in a contest where one of our city staffers wrote a, can't remember exactly what it was, but we won the contest and we won five thousand dollars. And I was allowed to actually pick who I wanted to award this money to. And I, I awarded it to this American Patriot Music Project, which to see it literally firsthand was really an honor and it was kind of a, if, if, if you ever get a chance, you know, the American Patriot Band plays around Temecula, the wineries. And if you see one of these events taking place, you should go because it really was an amazing thing to see these soldiers with these guitars. And they even teach them to play these guitars. So music lessons is a part of the, is a part of the project. So they make these guitars and then they show them how to use them. And, and music is a healing thing for a lot of people. So it gives them a chance to kind of focus on something other than what they went through and the experiences they did. And it's just such a cool, cool thing. So if you, if you happen to see the American Patriot Band playing, go and when they're on break, ask them about this project because you'll see them light up about, you know, what they have done with these, with these soldiers. So that's my comment. It was such a great night. And so, you know, like Zach was saying, you know, we're going to get back to these concerts. Well, I just went to one last weekend and it was awesome, so.
Do they have a website, Stu?
They do. Well, they have a Facebook page. You just put in American Patriot Band Music Project and it'll pop up.
And so you, you said, one of our staff members wrote something, so had to have been a poem or a story.
Yeah, yeah, it was something just like that. It was, and for some, it was a couple of years ago, three years ago. So I'm having fog brain right now, so.
It generated five thousand dollars, a five thousand dollar award that you got to give away. That's pretty cool.
Yeah, we actually won the contest, so it was really cool.
Let's find out who that was.
Yeah.
Because I'd love to thank them. That's wonderful.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for that news. I, I've heard them, but not for a while, so I'm going to look them up.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Jess? Matt? Matt, guys, hand up. Unmute.
Got stuck there for a second. Hey, so just a couple, one, one thing, Stu. The American Patriot Band, remember, did the opening for the State of the City back when I was mayor a few years back. One of the most incredible renditions of the Star Spangled Banner.
Yeah.
Very moving, so remarkable group of people, so glad to have them still, still involved. So I just wanted to do, provide a quick shout out to the city staff, actually, for the folks in planning and G I S and especially to Betsy Lowry. So you all approved the city moving forward on a planning grant from Cal Fire for, you know, fire risk reduction plan for South Temecula, Temecula Creek area. And I just, you know, it's funny because, you know, I, I work on these a lot in my own professional life and I guess just sort of take it for granted, but it is a Herculean effort to pull one of these together. And, and Betsy in particular just did an outstanding job. I mean, it looks fantastic. It's a great project and very hopeful that, that we're able to get funded on this because, there it is, because it, it really is. And, and, you know, it could, you know, based on what was proposed, it, it really can serve as a model for not just, you know, Temecula, but Riverside County in the state of California, trying to manage a lot of the competing needs and management priorities for properties, starting with, you know, fire risk and reduction of fuels, but also a lot of the, the other issues with regard to habitat and endangered species, water quality and watershed protection, homeless encampments, cultural resources. I mean, it hit just a lot of the, the issues that really prevent us from protecting the community from fire risk, but also, you know, ensuring, you know, quality natural resources as well. So fingers crossed that this thing gets, gets taken care of and funded because I think it has a, has a huge amount of potential and nice to see Temecula taking the lead on it.
What's the timeline for the announcement, Matt? Do we know?
You know, I think they have to have everything put together and reviewed by, basically by the start of the next fiscal year and have those funds allocated as, as quickly as possible. So, you know.
You know, after July, probably.
Yeah, I think, yeah, July and July, around that timeframe, and then we should be able to know. It's a, you know, three-year project, most of the, most of the planning grants and, and all that are about three to four-year projects. So look forward to, to seeing that move forward.
I know staff worked very hard on it and every time I'd go in to visit with Betsy, she had seemed like three computer screens all working on it, you know, so it was, it was a great project, so thanks for bringing that. Okay, anybody else? Jessica, upper left-hand corner.
There it is. All right, well, first off, I just want to say thank you for Michelle's Place, the Cancer Resort Center. For this weekend, they had an incredible walk for hope. I thought it was going to be three miles, but we were all surprised it was only like a mile and a half and it was, it was really beautiful. So the city went out with Team Eighty-nine and we had about a dozen men, women, and children. It was really beautiful. We had a good time and just were, had time to be able to read the signs of, you know, what these women and men have gone through with cancer as survivors. And so I just want to thank them. They had over four hundred attendees.
Good.
And they, they support and educate cancer patients, survivors, and family. And they are just so heart-filled and I just loved listening to them and looking at the, just the movement over there, just everybody just loving and hugging each other. It was just beautiful, just being very supportive. So they are continuing to expand and I look forward to heading over there, hopefully in the next couple of months and checking out what they have going on for the city. So I just want to thank them and, and the city actually for putting all of us through it as a, as a team eighty-nine. So thank you guys very much. It was a lot of fun.
Michelle's Place has a wonderful history, a long and wonderful history in Temecula. And just to give some background, it was the parents of Michelle Watson who started Michelle's Place when their daughter succumbed to breast cancer at a very early age, she was in her mid twenties. And they started this nonprofit and Michelle's Place has grown from an organization that provided support strictly for breast cancer survivors and patients, which includes men and women, to, now they're addressing all forms of cancer. And this came about as a result of the two-year cancer task force that the city formed to do research. And we started out doing research to discover why so many people feel they need to go to Scripps or UCLA or, you know, other larger medical centers to get cancer treatment. So we screened all the resources that were in Temecula and we found we have some real talent here in town and people need not go so far to get the specialized cancer treatment. And that task force also helped to fill some holes as a result. Temecula Valley Hospital has started an intern program, which is wonderful, a resident program for young doctors. And we had great participation from local colleges, other cities, up and down the fifteen, the two fifteen freeway because we're a region and we all work together when it comes to things like this. So Michelle's Place stepped up to the plate and expanded to address all cancers. And as we know, that's a very large number of people. And little did I know that just six months after that cancer task force ended, our thirty-three-year-old daughter would be diagnosed with stage three colon cancer. And Kim Goodnow was there instantly to offer support through Michelle's Place and everything. But we have wonderful doctors. By the grace of God, she's cancer-free two years later after radical, radical surgery and a year of chemo. So, and I lost my father to cancer when I was eight years old. I mean, it happens to every family, someone is touched by cancer at some point in their lives. And so just know that we have those resources here in town and Michelle's Place is an awesome place. And so thank you to everybody that went and thank you for going. I had horrible stomach flu last week, could not make it, but I'm glad you persevered and, you know, went. I knew it was going to be a lot of fun and the weather was perfect. So thank you, everyone. Okay, so we can move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve action minutes of May eleventh and May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve city treasures report as of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Number five, approve the city of Temecula alert and warning plan. Number six, approve purchase of the Flock Automated License Plate Recognition System. Number seven, adopt list of projects to be funded by Senate Bill One, S B One, for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two. Number eight, establish always stop control at the intersection of Pujo Street and First Street. Number nine, approve track map three eight zero seven nine located on Diaz Road between Vidalos Picos and Rancho Way. Number ten, approve track maps three seven three four one dash six, three seven three four one dash eight, three seven three four one dash nine located on the east side of Butterfield Stage Road between Kaiak Campos and Maria Hot Springs Road. Number eleven, award construction contract to P A L General Engineering, Inc. for the traffic signal. Park and ride access improvements, P W one eight dash eleven. Number twelve, award construction contract to I E General Engineering, Inc. for the ADA Compliance for Pavement Rehab Program, West Side Business Park Area, P W twenty dash zero eight. So any abstentions? Otherwise, I need a motion and a second on the consent counter. Okay, got Zach. And, okay, I, I heard Jessica, so Randy, you can, you know, if you heard somebody else, that's fine. So have a motion and a second and could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, council member Alexander.
Hi.
Council member Ron.
Hi.
Council member Stuart.
Hi.
Council member Schwank.
Yes.
Mayor Edwards.
Hi. All right, so that's unanimous. Right now, I'm going to recess the city council meeting to the scheduled meetings of Temecula Community Services District, successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, the Temecula Housing Authority and/or the Temecula Public Financing Authority, which I like to call the T P A F A. And thank you, Mr. Schwank.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'll now call tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Since we remain in the virtual setting, Madam City Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Yes, Director Alexander. Director Edwards. Director Ron.
Here.
Director Stuart.
Here.
President Schwank.
I'm here. Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not.
Okay, I'll go ahead and dispense with the reading of those rules and we'll move on to our consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number thirteen, approve action minutes of May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. And item number fourteen, set public hearing to approve T C S D proposed rates and charges for fiscal And item number fourteen, set public hearing to approve TCSD proposed rates and charges for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two. All right, you have motion and a second? I didn't hear a second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, so second there. All right, would you please take the roll call vote?
Yes, Director Alexander.
Hi.
Director Edwards.
Hi.
Director Ron.
Hi.
Director Stewart. Director Stewart.
Yes ma'am.
President Schwenk.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. That passes five zero. We'll go ahead and move on to our, uh, director's report. Director Hawkins, anything this evening?
To President, um, actually I think you may have a, something to cover.
That's where the slide was going. I knew you had one, Zach.
Sure. Okay, well, I can go and we can throw that slide up right now. Yeah. Actually, there we go. The, uh, virtual Memorial Day observance. So this year is going to look a little different, but the Temecula Valley Symphony wins brass and percussion will be performing an old fashioned concert to commemorate the Memorial Day. Uh, tune into the Temecula Parks and Rec Facebook page on Saturday, May twenty-ninth at seven PM for the musical premiere. And those are always fun when you, uh, when you're able to participate on Facebook. So make sure to comment and smash the thumbs up as the kids say. Uh, the Temecula Art and Street Painting Festival. Mark your calendars for this year's Art and Street Painting Festival. This is a hybrid event this year. The art exhibition will be held virtually on the city's website from June first to the sixth. Uh, you can explore an online marketplace, which includes handcrafted, one of a kind pieces for purchase. Uh, the chalk art competition will be held in Old Town again from June fourth to the sixth. So this modified in-person portion of the festival will feature large, detailed and colorful chalk art murals on an asphalt campus. We're really looking forward to that again. So that is my report. Director Hawkins, do you have anything else to add?
I think you noted, um, in regards to Memorial Day, I'm just glad we can play a small part in honoring our nation's heroes on that special day. So thank you. And that concludes my report.
Absolutely. Well said. Thank you. Uh, general matters report, anything this evening?
Uh, nothing tonight.
Thanks, sir. Directors, anything? All right. Seeing that, we'll go and adjourn this meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting, uh, Tuesday, June eighth. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Councilmember Schwenk. And I would like to reconvene the Temecula City Council Meeting under business item number fifteen, receive update on parking in Old Town Temecula and provide general direction regarding the same. And that would be Mr. Luke Watson, Community Department Director. Hi Luke.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Let me go ahead and share my screen here.
There it is.
I'm assuming everyone can see that. Okay, good. Uh, again, uh, thank you. Uh, I'm here tonight to talk to you, um, a little bit about Old Town parking. I wanted to talk a little bit about the history, um, and go over the two thousand nineteen Old Town Parking Survey results. And talk about some of the other issues going on in Old Town right now. There's a lot of energy and things changing down there and talk about recommendations and next steps. So I usually like to start with the, uh, the question of why are we here? Um, and, and as I mentioned, with, uh, kind of the surge in activity in Old Town, um, along with some, some interest, interest from some private parties, um, uh, discussing some things with the city, uh, in terms of public-private partnerships. We have the outdoor dining that's going on, that's impacting, um, on-street parking. Um, you know, there's a lot of new information, uh, a lot of new, uh, things going on. So it, you know, the city manager wisely thought it'd be a good idea for us to get together and, and kind of start from the beginning and work our way to today in terms of, uh, what's going on with parking in Old Town. So again, like I said, start from the beginning, uh, Old Town Parking Strategy. And the city does have a very well-defined parking strategy and it began in nineteen ninety-eight when the city commissioned Kaiser Marsen Associates, otherwise known as KMA, to conduct a Old Town Market Assessment. And the primary role of that, uh, effort was to provide strategies to the city's spare economic development. Uh, and, and it has turned out to actually be a very successful, um, uh, study. And part of that study was, uh, some key recommendations regarding how to deal with parking moving into the future from that point. And those recommendations were, uh, there were two of them and they were intended to work, um, basically as one. Uh, the first was to consider reducing or eliminating parking requirements for new development as an economic development incentive, obviously lowering the cost and burden of development in Old Town. Um, and at the same time, uh, the city through its former redevelopment agency, um, should consider making inv- uh, public investments in, in public parking. Um, and, and you know, that's, that's what the city did. So, um, I want to talk a little bit about the first part, with the reducing or eliminating parking requirements for development as an economic development incentive. And the Old Town specific plan has gone through some evolutions over the years. The original was in nineteen ninety-four. Um, it was, it was not anything like the specific plan we have today, uh, which is much more of a, a traditional downtown oriented specific plan. And that was pri- you know, not, it was, yeah, I'd say primarily, um, one of the major variables was the nineteen ninety-eight KMA market assessment, um, which, which then led to, um, two updates in the early, early two thousands. Uh, and then we did a comprehensive update in two thousand and ten. And the, the best way to kind of demonstrate what changes took place after the KMA, uh, recommendations came through is to kind of look at a, uh, a hypothetical, uh, project as if it were built in, uh, under any one of these specific plans. So just think of a six thousand square foot mixed-use building with the first floor as restaurant, the second floor as office and the third floor as residential units. And you can see under the nineteen ninety-four specific plan, that project would have required thirty-two parking spaces. So whether that be parking structure or the purchase of additional lots for surface parking, obviously that would lead to, you know, higher costs and, and, uh, a higher burden for the development. Well, KMA came along, gave us the parking recommendations, uh, i- in nineteen ninety-eight. The city, uh, wisely took those recommendations and, um, changed this specific plan. And under the two thousand four and the two thousand six update was a, it was a, was a, just a more of a minor update, but we'll just lump them together. That same six thousand square foot project would have, would have required zero parking spaces. So it would have been economically feasible to build that project much sooner, um, without the parking requirement. And then in two thousand and ten, we, we added back in a requirement for residential parking at one per unit. That was just more appropriate, um, for, uh, you know, the quality of life for residents and it just made a lot more sense. So that's where we stand today. And the second part of the, part of the parking strategy was to make public investment in, in public parking. And the city did that over, uh, a number of years, um, adding over seven hundred and fifty spaces to Old Town. And these are just parking lot locations. This doesn't include on-street parking. Um, of course, the Civic Center Garage being the largest, it's three hundred and sixty-six or about there. There are public spaces. There are some other spaces in that structure that are dedicated for, uh, city vehicles. But, um, yeah, so seven hundred and fifty over, over that, over that span. Uh, and this is the existing parking supplies. You can take a, it's a comparison. Uh, it's not an apples to apples. Two thousand and seven, we had about thirteen hundred and forty-five. Two thousand and nineteen study, they located eighteen hundred and fifty-two. Uh, that does represent a thirty percent, a thirty-seven percent increase, uh, primarily from, uh, because of the parking structure. Uh, but there was some other private development and the way they were capturing parking spaces in the two thousand and nineteen did lead to a few more, uh, spaces that weren't counted in the two thousand and seven. But all in all, there are more spaces now than there were in two thousand and seven, which is with the first year we did a, a parking use study. And the strategy I think has, I mean, it's been largely successful. The parking, uh, reducing the parking, uh, standards and building, uh, public parking lots isn't the only variable that led to successful projects, but it was one of the major uh, variables. And these are just some examples. There are many more. You have the Chuax Building, which is, you know, um, doesn't have any parking onsite, but is right next to the city parking structure. Uh, Bailey's has no parking onsite, but is right next to the, what we refer to as the South Side or Stampede Parking Lot. And then, uh, on the right there, um, is what we call the Dalton One and it just utilizes on-street parking. So, uh, and these were all built after the two thousand and four specific plan change where we reduced the parking standards. So that was the strategy, but there, you know, it was always, uh, it was always a, a given that the parking supply needed to be managed in terms of uh, monitoring. So how, how was it being used? Um, and then over the years, we've, we've consulted with Fairham Peers, which is a, a professional transportation, uh, engineering firm. And the city conducted periodic parking studies to monitor the usage patterns in Old Town. The first being in two thousand and seven, then another in ten, two thousand and ten, and then the, the most recent one, which is was in two thousand and nineteen. I'm going to talk a little bit about the results of the two thousand and nineteen study tonight, understanding that, um, a lot has changed since two thousand and nineteen. So, what did the study look at? It, it is, it looked at existing parking supply and demand, which is a, a no-brainer, but it also made some predictions about future demand. Uh, and it looked at length of stay of cars on street and then made some recommendations for the city in terms of how to manage the parking supply moving forward. This is, uh, an aerial, just of the study area. This is Old Town. You can see the fifteen freeway on the right, Murida Creek on the left. It's not important to, to understand all the numbers and everything. Those are just parking lots and just to orient you, obviously the North Arch and City Hall and the South Arch. What did it look at? It looked at available on-street and off-street spaces designated as public parking. Those were surveyed. The survey result, uh, the surveys were conducted, uh, on a Thursday through a Sunday. Um, and they were conducted every hour on the hour for twelve hours on each of those days. That means every hour, the consultant's team went out and counted every single car in Old Town. And we also, uh, uh, took a look at some of the illegal parking. Because if a car is in Old Town, even if it's illegally parked, it's part of the total demand. And the, one of the primary questions that the study was trying to, trying to answer or shed light on is this, this idea of has the parking supply reached the industry standard, uh, threshold of eighty-five percent utilization? And this is an important concept that we'll kind of, um, keep touching on as we move throughout the presentation. And this is, this is the industry standard as the most efficient, um, level of parking utilization, whether it's in an individual parking lot or whether it's district-wide. And basically what it's saying is, is that you, you, while you have a parking supply, you at least have fifteen percent that's free. So people can come and go and find a parking spot relatively easy, but you don't have so much parking that you have a huge surplus and you, you've led to the, uh, underutilization of land. So this is really the industry standard and it's, uh, it's eighty-five percent. And they say as long as you're below that, you're good. As soon as you get to eighty-five percent, you need to start thinking about different strategies to manage your parking. So I want to, I want to go through a little bit and just show you what the peak usage is for these three, these four days that were looked at in two thousand and nineteen. So we'll start with Thursday. Again, it's from ten AM to ten PM every hour on the hour, counting all the cars in Old Town each hour. Just to orient you, the, the yellow and the red represents the percentage of the, of the parking supply throughout Old Town, the whole, all of Old Town that was occupied. And the gray represents the percentages of all of the parking in Old Town that was vacant in that hour. And this is the eighty-five percent threshold that I was talking about. Um, that is, it very important that we, that we, uh, use that as a marker that we, that we were, you know, uh, that we're below it or above it. It, it determines whether or not we have or do not have enough parking. So for Thursday, the peak demand was twelve PM, uh, that middle of the day. Uh, you can see that with, it's sixty-three plus one, the little red line represents the illegal parking. So sixty-four total percent of the parking in Old Town was utilized on Thursday at its peak hour. Uh, and then that means thirty-six percent, uh, was vacant. And that thirty-six percent roughly equates to about six hundred and seventy spaces on, on Thursday. Um, and of course, this is well below the eighty-five percent threshold. And this is a, well, I'm just going to touch on this briefly. This is for Thursday. This just shows at the peak hour, the red represents where, you know, you have these hotspots where parking is utilized at a hundred percent or more. The green and the yellows means that it's, it's, it's fifty percent or less essentially. So and this is just kind of the pattern you'll see for Thursday and we'll, we'll see the others for the other three days as well. And you can see here, it's, it's, it's mostly, um, up in the northern side, uh, portion of Old Town, along with some of the street sections. So this is Friday and the peak demand i- is in the evening, which is not surprising. It's at eight PM. A total of sixty-eight percent of the parking in Old Town was used at its peak hour on Friday. Um, and you can see that the change in the heat map, you see that big red spot there at the bottom. That's the Stampede Parking Lot. So, um, as the stampede, uh, kind of revs up at night, uh, it, the, the usage starts to shift south.
So Luke, question.
Yes.
Looking, looking at City Hall, um, which is the big yellow, yes, right down, yeah, right in there.
Yeah.
So that's, that is, that's the street parking and the parking structure parking?
Right. So these lines, these linear lines here just represent street parking segments.
Mm-hmm.
And then the squares and rectangles, those represent parking lots.
So that tells me that the parking structure at City Hall was fifty-one to seventy-five percent full?
That's right. On Fri- at Friday's peak hour.
Oh, wow. Okay. Thank you.
So Saturday, uh, and Saturday does have the highest usage peak hour. Um, it was at seven PM. Uh, a total of seventy-three percent of the parking was utilized within, um, the whole of Old Town, um, still below the eighty-five percent threshold considerably. Um, and you can see that, you know, a lot, most of the street segments on Mercedes and, um, uh, Front Street as well as the big kind of maroon. This is, this is the Stampede Parking Lot. This maroon color means it was more than a hundred percent utilized. That means it's full plus illegal parking. So, y- you know, on Saturday night, that's, that's the hottest of hotspots for, for parking, um, over the weekend. And then Sunday, Sunday is an entirely different day, obviously. Uh, it peaks in the morning and falls off dramatically as, as each hour goes by. It's peaked at one o'clock and it peaked at sixty-six percent of total use, of total supply. And this is its usage hotspot. So what are some of the observations of the study? Um, at least in two thousand and nineteen, when it was done, um, there was adequate, adequate parking available, uh, specific plan wide. However, it is not always perceived to be conveniently located, which I think we all have experienced ourselves. And like I said, there's some segments have hotspots. They're, they're full almost all the time, while others throughout the, uh, the district are, you know, uh, mostly empty, um, most of the week. Um, so some of the projections the study's made about future demand, it, uh, it, based on the different projects that are, that are um, projected to come online, yeah, the, the study said that, um, the, the district would reach eighty-five percent occupancy after two thousand twenty-four and a hundred percent after two thousand thirty. Now that's two thousand and nineteen. Um, don't know if that's entirely accurate today, but that's what it was in two thousand and nineteen. And regardless of those projections, there are, uh, strategies that can be employed to manage the demand. Including time parking, median parking and, and, uh, encouraging ride share like taxi Uber Lyft. These, these strategies are used to prolong the useful life of your, your existing parking supply. So you can get the most out of it for longer.
Luke, can you tell us the difference between time parking and metered parking?
Time parking is like two-hour parking maximum, something like that. And metered parking is like, you have to pay.
Okay.
Put the money in the meter.
Okay, thanks.
So the current conditions findings in, from two thousand and nineteen is that, and, and you saw it on, on, uh, uh, on the hotspots is the Civic Center Garage and South Side Stampede Parking Lots are typically are utilized. Stampede is obviously utilized at the, at the peak hour on Friday and Saturday, but the rest of the week, it's, it's pretty much, uh, less than half full. Um, and in terms of on-street parking, the, the majority of on-street, um, stays are less than four hours. Um, but there are, there are fourteen percent of the on-street stays are over four hours. And we think, we don't have data on this, but we think anecdotally many of those stays are, are employees of businesses downtown. So we can encourage their, them to get their employees to not park on the streets. That would, you know, theoretically open up fourteen percent of the, of the supply rate there. And, and again, eighty-five percent utilization occurs in some areas. Um, but those are really just the hotspot areas, not just, it, it, it doesn't represent utilization district-wide. So the study did provide some recommendations for the city moving forward. Um, these recommendations are, uh, they're, they're, they're broken up into three phases and they're intended to be done in succession. So the, the near term would, you wouldn't put the midterm recommendations before the, the near-term recommendations. Uh, so the near-term recommendations, which, which is one to two years, uh, would be develop informational programs, you know, the city's website and creating an app, which the city has done, um, conduct business outreach and enhance signage. We have done that. There are new signs in, in, in Old Town, uh, that direct people to parking, although, you know, there's, there's more that could be done there for sure. that direct people to parking, although, you know, there's, there's more that could be done there for sure. Another recommendation was to establish time limits and they provided very specific areas of on-street segments that should get time limits first, primarily Old Town Front Street from the Northern Arch down to Third Street. And it should only be for three hours. And then consider expanding that as you do usage studies and you find out, well, you know, we, we, we have eighty-five percent utilization in other areas and we need to expand that out. Again, near-term, establish a parking district. This is an effort between the city and businesses and property owners and it would be responsible for, for doing things like setting parking time limits and charge amounts, collecting and managing those revenues, which would then, you know, build and maintain parking facilities and, and operate different informational programs. Important to note about the parking district structure is that the city council is still considered to be, and would be considered the final decision-making body and will retain that authority. So midterm, so three to ten years, it's add passenger and loading zones. I think we would probably do that. You know, as soon as we can anyways, expand the, the time limits and then in this timeframe, start to introduce parking charges on-street. So long-term, this is the ten, this is looking out, you know, a decade or more would be to enact charging on the side streets. So, you know, the number streets and, and all of those kind of side streets, if the occupancy exceeds eighty-five percent for more than four hours and consider charging for parking in public lots. But that's, again, a, a long-term recommendation. And most importantly, in the long-term recommendations, this is where you, this is the first area where you see, you know, hey, listen, after ten years, if you're exceeding eighty-five percent, you've done metered, you've done paid-for parking, you've done all the other things and you still are eighty-five percent, this is when they recommend you actually move to adding supply to the, the district, whether it be surface lots. In Old Town's case, it would most likely not be surface lots, because they're just not, the land's too valuable. We're talking about, this is when we start thinking about parking structures. And just, you know, just for information, you know, we, the, the study did give us an estimate of what parking structures cost and for an above grade, which is your typical parking structure, it's anywhere between twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars per space. And then underground is much more expensive at fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars per space. And that was in two thousand and nineteen. So I would, I would expect that that, that number's higher today. And this is just a, they gave us a nice graphic to show us kind of the, the, you know, the phases, you know, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one. Introduce time limits, establish a parking district, midterm, two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-nine. Introduce parking charges, expand initial time limits. And this is the long-term two thousand and twenty-nine plus, which is where you see the introduction of creating additional parking supply. So there are some other considerations and parking issues outside of what was dealt with in the two thousand and nineteen parking study. Obviously, the big one in the room is the outdoor dining program, which has been a huge success. And we just met today again with the Old Town Steering Committee to discuss staff moving forward with developing a, potentially a, a permanent program. The good news is, as of right now, we think we're net positive on parking with the program, probably taking up around seventy spaces, but the new parking out in front of City Hall, adding around ninety spaces. So we're kind of net ahead, you know, around twenty spaces. So that's good. But those are temporary spaces. Those won't be there forever. And of course, that, that will have a permanent impact, you know, a permanent program for outdoor dining will have a permanent impact on the street parking. And that's something that we need to consider moving forward. Of course, COVID impacts on Old Town, which probably was the complete opposite of what we thought was gonna happen, which is most of this last year for me at least. It's just anecdotal evidence, but I think all of you, everybody who goes to Old Town sees that there's, there seems to be a, a major surge in demand taking place. How much of that will last? Don't know. I think some of it will last. And, you know, that leads to the question of, you know, is the two thousand and nineteen parking study active at this point? It's, it's probably mostly accurate, but there's, there's just a lot of new information that, you know, needs to be considered. So, and I know that's a lot. It was pretty quick, but in summary, I just wanna, you know, reiterate that the city has implemented a defined parking strategy for over twenty-two years, including what I talked about earlier. The city hasn't just been sitting back on its, on its heels. It's been, it's been engaged in this effort, very strategically for a long time. We've continued to monitor the parking in Old Town through our parking studies and trying our best to heed the, the expert advice that we receive. And again, the parking studies recommend a phased approach to dealing with this, and they have since the outset. And I, I just wanna reinforce that eighty-five percent utilization has never been recorded by one of our studies district-wide. It's been recorded in hotspots, but even at its, at its peak on Saturday, we never even got to seventy-five percent utilization. So that's just important. Now, the caveat there is that's, those aren't special event days. Those days are, that, that's, those don't count. And though, we didn't do, we don't, we didn't do any studies on, on, you know, major holiday weekends. These are i- i- we just did, but we, we tried to find summer and fall day, oh, weekends that were, you know, high season, but your average high season weekends. And like I was mentioning throughout, you know, so much has changed since two thousand and nineteen in Old Town. That, that leads to the staff recommendation tonight, which is, we think it's, it's time to go ahead and do another comprehensive usage study. And we're asking for direction to go ahead and do that. And then we're also asking for continued direction to work with the Old Town Steering Committee on all these matters and to return to council with the study findings when they're complete. So that completes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Great information, Luke. And I remember the days when you, when there were five cars on Old Town Front Street on a Sunday afternoon. So how times have changed. And I think it was obvious that it was planning, you know, through Kaiser Marston telling us to put the theater downtown and our center of government downtown, that really started the ball rolling. We didn't want Old Town to die. So it's certainly not dead. So in a sense, it's really good that we're dealing with these issues and it's nice that we have a plan. Does anybody have any questions? There's a lot of information. So what are you looking for us? You're looking for direction on moving forward on those two points, right?
Right. I, I think Kelsey member Stewart had a question.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I took my glasses off. You have to wave even bigger than you normally would. Okay, go ahead, Stu.
So we've identified the, if we decide to go vertical down the road, we're gonna use, you know, one of the existing parking lots. Is that correct?
Yeah, the strategy was the Sixth Street Parking Lot and the Stampede Parking Lot. Those would be the north and south future sites for any parking structures.
And then you mentioned special events, which we have a ton in Old Town. So have you identified parking lots outside of Old Town that's a short walk or even a long walk? So when we do have, you know, large special events, rod run, you know, and there's many more. But that are, that are close enough that we can utilize them? And do we have any agreements with those shopping centers and/or, you know, neighborhood areas that we can, we can utilize them?
Yeah, I don't think we have any formal agreements. I know that we use the, the site on Santiago. Santiago, right, right over the Santiago Bridge. That's a city-owned site and that's been used with shuttle service and people just walking back and forth. And that's a really big site, so we can handle a lot. We were talking about a, a potential special event just today and it would seem, it would seem that the, some of those vacant sites that are just south of Old Town.
Yeah.
Past the U-Haul site, those would be good candidates. There's a lot of vacant space down there and it's, it's relatively walkable. So I think those would be good candidates in the future as well.
Matt?
Are we, are we moving to comments? I don't have any questions. I just had a.
Well, let's see if you have any other, anybody with any questions. Zach, you have a question?
I do, and I just have one. And it's just something maybe, I, I don't suspect we have the answer, but I just wanna at least get it on everyone's radar. And we talk about parking, this might seem odd, but do we know how many people arrive in Old Town without their personal vehicle, like via transit? Walking, biking, you know, Uber Lyft? Do we have a baseline understanding of? And certainly not everyone drives to Old Town, but people, people are coming here. Do we have an idea of that?
You, you know, we don't, but we, as we reviewed the two thousand and nineteen study, we learned, we learned a considerable amount. And one of the questions we wanted to ask in the future is exactly that. How many, we wanna survey and, and observe how many people are actually coming in to the district by foot. We wanna see if we can't get Uber and Lyft raw data. I know they won't give us specific data, but if they'll give us data on, on, on dropping people off and take, you know, just, you know, the ride-share data that we can, we can say, okay, that's, that's the demand that's taking place right now. But, and we wanna add that into the next study and say that's, that's a, that's something we want the, the, the fair peers guys to look at.
Well, thanks. I think that's important. And I mean, RTA does a rundown here in the evening, so I know we don't have, have done on that. But even like thinking long-term with them of expanding service and doing some micro-transit stuff within the city for those, those peak hours might be something long-term to help. Cause you think every, every parking space that isn't used is saved for someone that needs to drive here. So that's important that we look at that.
Well, and also just to learn how we can, can increase that, that type of behavior and then track it over time, so we can benchmark it. So that's, it's a great question and it's definitely on our radar.
Thanks.
Any other questions? I, I have, I have one question, Luke. We talked about it earlier today and that is, if we can find out if the parking structure, which keeps track of cars, it tracks cars in and out and, and records available spaces and to see if there's a way that it can save the history of the parking in that structure. Cause my question was, is there ever a time when we're using all of the structure all the way up to the third floor?
I, I believe it can. I'll talk to a Public Works Director, Pat Thomas, who put that system together. I believe it can, remember? And, and I do know anecdotally, I've been down in Old Town recently and there have been a couple of times when the parking structure was just about completely full.
Okay. And I saw Pat, there, there popped up.
Yeah, like, like Luke mentioned, we do have the ability to track the usage of the spaces in the structure. And just from my observation, I know that the structure and, and accounting system has shown kind of maximum usage, but really only during those types of special events. I, I've never seen it fully used on just a regular, either weekday or weekend.
Okay, that's, it's something to know. And eventually, you know, we haven't reached the eighty-five percent yet. So eventually that's going to be the case, I think, especially as, as Mercedes Street develops, so.
Matt, a mayor?
Mister, Mister Adams?
If I could add one other thing, you know, kind of on the same level as special events. You know, we're very fortunate that we have a farmer's market, right? Every Saturday in Old Town. And over the last, you know, couple decades, that has grown to, you know, really quite a proportion. And so that, that parking gets redistributed all throughout Old Town and then folks are shopping, eating, staying and stuff. And, and much like an event, Saturdays in Old Town is an event, if nothing else.
Yeah.
As folks are going to that market and that has become a destination event every Saturday morning and done quite well. So it's, it's nice to see that the, the market is, is alive and well and successful. And folks are finding their way there every Saturday too.
Oh, thank you, Aaron. So do we need a vote on this or you just need direction or what do you want?
Um, I think just general direction would be fine.
Matt?
Okay, we go to comments then?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so I, you know, I just wanna provide a few comments here, cause I think maybe we're having the wrong conversation about parking in Old Town. You know, and just say, look, back in our history, you know, there, there was a time when, you know, Mike used to say, you know, you could shoot a cannon down Front Street, you know.
That's me, it says that.
That was yours, yeah. Shoot a cannon down Front Street on a Saturday night and, and not hit anything, right? And so, so we moved to, you know, sort of, I mean, the parking requirement, removing the parking requirement was a good one, cause it definitely helped maximize development potential for Old Town and incentivize the quality really of the construction that we're looking for as well. But, you know, today, today's different, right? And I think, you know, past council members, you know, and even when I got on early on, used to say, you know, gosh, you know, we were hoping that we'd have a parking problem one day, you know. Well, we do. Okay, so we're not hoping for one anymore. I think we genuinely have one. And, and I think it's a, I think it's being mischaracterized in the, in the studies a bit. Now, not surprising, I have some issues with the, with the study, but, you know, what's lacking, I guess, in the detail is, you know, what days are they selecting? Not just, you know, days of the week, but what time of the year are they looking at, right? Is it, you know, is it, you know, what's the, you know, we've done a lot of this work in the past, like, is it raining out? You know, when they're doing this, is it cold? Is it hot? Is it a hundred and fourteen degree day? I mean, we don't have any of that detail to be able to say, you know, and, and maybe it's in those reports, right? But I, I don't have any of the detail to say, well, that's, that's a true characterization of a twelve-month cycle of parking utilization in Old Town. Right? So, so that's, that's, you know, part of the issue for me anyway. You, you showed some of the graphics on utilization by sort of parking location. And one thing really struck me was, you know, like the Stampede on a Friday or a Saturday night, that Stampede parking lot is over capacity. Well, yeah, because it's convenient and located next to a lot of stuff that's happening in Old Town. But if you move to the far north end of, of Old Town, you see a lot of green parking zones. Well, not surprising. All of those businesses are pretty much shut down, right? So from a convenience standpoint, and I keep hearing that over and over, is that, well, we just, we have plenty of parking. You know, the, the parking issue is, you know, lack of convenient parking. Well, look, you know, I spent years working at universities where, you know, not only do we get the premier faculty spots that are a twenty-minute walk from our office, but we get to pay hundreds of dollars a year to use them. You know, as well, right? So that's fantastic. So I'm, I'm well aware of the convenience issue. But it's, you know, we're not talking about employees, we're talking about visitors, right? So if you've got a darker parking lot behind, you know, a business that's shut down or, you know, a business complex that's shut down, the comfort of somebody wanting to go park there at night or down any of those streets, you know, I mean, you, you just saw the statistics and Stu, you mentioned it earlier this evening, was all the, you know, parking violations and other things, let alone all of the, you know, vehicle break-ins and things that we see happening. I mean, where's the comfort level of, I mean, we have a metro team now, which is great, but parking in some of those areas that are, you know, near businesses that are closed or parts of Old Town that are completely inactive on a Friday night, right? And conversely, when you talk about, you know, sort of the parking on, on, say, Saturday when you've got, or the weekend when you have the farmer's market, well, yeah, everybody wants to park near the farmer's market, you know, and so the Stampede parking is underutilized, right? And so you watch the sort of movement of folks, but, you know, not surprisingly, we're seeing, you know, parking issues. And I mean, we could do all the studies we want to, but I, you know, I don't know what it's like for you all. But if I were to walk around Old Town or walk around the city and just ask people, visitors or residents, hey, is parking in Old Town good? I mean, collectively, I don't think we get a lot of yeses, right? I mean, you know, this was, this was an issue that was brought up when I was, you know, first contemplating City Council years ago, was a lot of residents said, there's a parking problem in Old Town. Well, that was years ago. You know, and now today we have a lot more businesses that have been developed in the meantime and a lot more utilized, utilization than we've ever had, right? So I think we have a parking problem. And I don't think we need to, you know, rely on this sort of artificial eighty-five percent. Because I think what we're, what we're classifying as our parking portfolio, I don't think is justly giving, you know, I think, an accurate description of what parking really is like in Old Town. And so, you know, so bottom line from my perspective is, is, look, if, let's just pretend we had all the money in the world and, and, you know, cost of parking didn't matter, you know, you could easily see like a transit center and parking where, where the farmer's market is today on that city lot. And you could easily see, you know, something near the Stampede as well, providing, you know, hundreds of additional spaces, right? And, and the reason I bring that up is because that's, you know, that's the kind of planning that I would like to see happening right now. You know, we talk about special events as another, you know, well, we don't characterize the special events. I know we're well above eighty-five percent utilization on special events. And, and Stu, you mentioned it earlier. I mean, I almost felt like, at least pre-COVID, almost every weekend, there was a special event. almost every weekend there was a special event, right? I mean, we were constantly, you know, and community services, that's their charge, right? So there was always something going on down there and, and it always felt like parking was insufficient. And so a stopgap, I think temporarily of saying, well, we could have people park at Santiago, which is, you know, how far away? Well, that's, that's nice, but it definitely doesn't resolve the issue and it definitely places convenient parking. Look, if we want to drive tourism and we want to drive utilization of businesses in Old Town, making it, you know, 20 minutes to get to your destination, once you've parked, you know, it's like going to visit the airport, you know, that's not what we want for Old Town. So, you know, so I really think we need to have that conversation. You know, this reminds me, I remember years ago, you know, Las Vegas area built the highway two fifteen.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, it's this massive freeway development in an area that didn't need it. In fact, you go back to the nineties and a lot of movies were actually filmed on the two fifteen in Vegas because it was so easy to shut down. Right? Hollywood would go out there all the time. Well, you know, at that point, the highway two fifteen didn't make a whole lot of sense, right? Today it makes perfect sense, right? And everybody is glad that they did that investment now because trying to build the two fifteen now would be a nightmare, right? And not to mention the expense. And so all I'm saying is, you know, knowing all of that, I think we need to have a little bit different dialogue about what parking in Old Town actually means. And then look, there's this whole conversation because I know the cost of spaces, you know, a single space being thirty thousand dollars or more, you know, under today's construction cost, that's a remarkable investment, right? Just for one little parking stall. I get it. And there's this fear, I think, in the planning community that, you know, if a city or, or even a private sector builds a parking structure, we don't know what's happening with autonomous cars and Uber Lyft and all these other modes of transportation that are becoming more commonplace. You know, I've seen a lot of cities say, well, we don't want to build parking garages because we're going to be left with, you know, in 20 years, this asset that we can't use, you know? But I've seen other cities, you know, especially in Europe, build parking structures with the idea that, you know, and they're actually intentionally designed to be converted into something into the future if parking is no longer necessary, right? So it just, it kind of eliminates that, that risk of expense. So I think there's, you know, I think we need to get a little bit creative here. And I think, you know, I mean, just from my perspective, at least, I think we just need to acknowledge that we have a serious parking problem in, in Old Town. Regardless of what the numbers say. I mean, you know, I, I'd be happy to join with all my council members with a pad of paper and just, you know, and a clicker or whatever, and just ask people, yes or no, you think there's a parking problem, you know? And I think it would be a resounding yes. So, you know, so why, why don't we, why don't we address that rather than worrying too much about the studies? I know that drives a lot of our decision-making, but I think, I think we need to look at this a little bit differently.
I agree, Matt. And if I get it, I think there's definitely a difference between there's parking and then there's convenient parking. And when you're talking about on-street parking and everybody's idea of convenient is going to be a little bit different. So there's no way we're going to be able to provide convenient parking to every single business. But I think we can be definitely be strategic in the planning of additional parking lots. And obviously we're going to have to go up. And the higher you go, the more expensive things get because California requirements are incredible. And then if we go underground, it's even more expensive in with all the earthquake retrofitting and everything we have to do. So yeah, I agree with you, but I think we do this with the understanding that not every parking space is going to be convenient, as convenient as people want. But we'll definitely be able to better address the situation. So Steve, you got a question or comment?
Comment. So I totally agree with Matt. I think there is more of an issue than a, a study is going to show unless we're going to study event weekends. So there, you know, that, that is something that, like Matt said, it was like, it, it's hard to find a weekend that there isn't an event. And so I, I think without studying that, plus Old Town, I mean, it's literally exploded in the last, you know, two years. So, and we don't want to squelch that. We don't want to, we don't want to put a, you know, a bucket of water on something that's on fire. And so, so I, I think we really do need to, and again, I mean, if, if, if in fact, our long-term goal is to have a Old Town district that is financially, a financial engine for the city. I think we need, yeah, and we need to invest in that engine. So, you know, if, and, and again, financially, we're in a better position now than we'll be 10 years from now. And so it, it's like, we've already identified, you know, we have the property, we have the land. I think we do need to start looking at what is our opportunity to increase inconvenient parking. Like Matt was saying, there's a lot of areas in town that is a little spooky if you're going to try to park.
Yeah.
And, you know, we do have, you know, a homeless issue and a lot of people just don't feel comfortable, you know, having their wife, and we have a lot of women, believe it or not. I mean, I've been down there on a Saturday night and you see groups of women walking around. So it's like, okay, you know, if that were my wife and her friends, I'd be a little, a little concerned. So again, I, I, I think it's, if we're gonna do a study, we need to look at those event weekends and, and see how, how we can maximize the parking, parking that we do have. And, and, you know, I, I get it, you know, the rod run, we're going to be maximizing every square inch of land around Old Town. And so, but on an average event weekend, we're, we're not packed out like that, but we're packed. And so, so that's something that I, I think, and, and I'm a businessman. So I'm looking around and I'm thinking, we've got something really special down here. And we don't want to, we don't want to be known as that city. Man, I love going there, but I can never find decent parking. And so that's something I, I think we really need to consider as we're moving forward. How, how are we going to address that issue? And, you know, even like people who live in Old Town, there's, there's a fair amount of people actually live in Old Town. And so when parking becomes inconvenient for them, I think it's our responsibility. We're the ones who, who kind of encourage the developers to build these apartments above these, you know, businesses. And so when, when we said, oh, you don't need to, well, and, and there is specific parking for that, you know, I get that.
Yes.
But, but even still, it's kind of like, I'm, I'm more in favor of looking at this a little bit more intensely. Let's just say that. And, and, you know, as far as the eighty-five percent rule, I get that. And you're right, there's a lot of times, especially this parking structure, it's empty, except for an event weekend, it's packed. I mean, I, I tried going into it one event weekend and I made it all the way to the top. It took me 20 minutes to get back down to the bottom because it was just so packed and everybody's backing out, trying to get in. And it's like, it was a nightmare. I'll never go in that parking lot again in an event weekend. But, but that's, you know, it really does get utilized on event weekends, but it's almost half-empty any other time of, you know, during the week. So, so anyways, I'm with Matt. I say, let's, let's, I say, if we're gonna, we're gonna study anything, let's study an event weekend. Not necessarily a rod run weekend. That's, that's kind of a, you know.
Well, that, that's an exception, you know, a special exception.
Yeah. But, but we do have a lot of events that take place, you know, and probably not right now because, you know, COVID, everybody's still kind of trying to get up back to speed. But 2019, it was packed every weekend. So.
And Stu, the caveat is you realize those are city events.
Yeah, well.
You know, the quilt show and the, and the, and the, you know, the, the sidewalk art contest.
The Greek festival that's down here, you know, that, there's events that are put on by other entities too. So.
Yeah.
I, I think that's something we really gotta, we gotta really take a close look at, but.
Zach, okay, I'll get you Jess. Like, go ahead, Zach.
Okay, thank you, Matt Mayor. So I, I had a bunch of comments and quite honestly, Luke touched on a lot of them in the presentation, so I won't belabor it. But I don't disagree with my colleagues, especially on some of the longer-term thinking and, and really what does an adaptable parking structure look like long-term? I mean, do you think that's a rather important conversation to have? You know, some of the things that trouble me with our current plan is, is it's not managed in any meaningful way. You know, we don't manage it like a utility. So, you know, no wonder there's some, some, some concern. So typically, when we travel and, and we'll go to a city that has a, let's just say on-street parking that you have to pay for, I know I will be able to find a parking space every single time. And, and, and honestly, it's because it's managed, right? It's managed that way. So for me, you know, making that, that, that move to, to paid on-street parking is probably good in, in the mid to long-term. You know, to address some of the concerns about, you know, the, the dark alleys and things like that, you know, that's a legitimate point. And, and part of, you know, activating the creek walk and, and having businesses orient to that and, and seeing some, some evolution of Old Town over time, where some of those businesses that close at five o'clock turn into something else, right? And you get this evolution and things change. So investing in a more walkable downtown, which we've done with, with sidewalks, we can continue to do with street lighting, with the lights that have made it much more vibrant, those are all important things to get people to park and feel safe. Whether they're truly unsafe or not is, is, is unknown, but the, the feeling of people feeling safe is important. You know, obviously with the outdoor dining program, things are going to change, right? We talk about highest and best use all the time. And some businesses have maybe figured out that a parked car in front of their business isn't the highest and best use. So we should consider, you know, parking improvement district, right? Where the district comes together and works towards, you know, sort of tackling some of those parking goals as well. I think that's important. Luke, you touched on, you know, Uber and Lyft, I think that's important that we look at. And then again, just the businesses coming together with an understanding, much like they do at the mall. Employees don't take this, the spaces, you know, right at the front door, right? There's a place where employees park. So again, working with that business community. I do think having an updated study is important. I don't know if I want to go down with some of my clickers in my, my notepad with you.
Yeah, who said that anyway?
But I do think it's important, you know, we spend a lot of time in Old Town as a family. And, and, you know, we see those challenges. My family had a restaurant down there for many years. And, and we see those challenges of, of even businesses competing for that space, you know? They, there's a lot of puppy guarding, right? Which is a problem, right? So it's not managed again, so it goes to that. So, you know, I'm looking forward, I, I sit on the Old Town Student Committee with Councilmember Alexander. So I'm looking forward to seeing this and really just taking in everyone's perspective. So as we come out of that and, and into this more robust dialogue for a genuine plan of action for that longer term, what do we want to see? Cause we certainly, we want to make people feel comfortable. We want people to be able to park and we, we want people to be able to get to the Old Town, really however they want to get there. And so really overall, these goals sort of all intertwined. So that's all I have.
During Rod Run, I actually saw somebody sitting in a camp chair, you know, a lady sitting in a camp chair, holding a parking space. But, and they, she had an umbrella, so she was ready and armed. Jessica?
All right. So just kind of going back a little bit, Luke, if I can just ask you a quick question. I know we've spoken before, but just so the public has more of an understanding. Cause I think Councilmember Schwenk had brought this up too, in a sense of just paid parking. So it just kind of flags something for me. If we do build that with a parking, do we have to go through paid parking? And if so, can you explain to the public what that matter would look like for our residents?
In terms of paid parking in Old Town?
Yeah, as far as why we would need to move to paid parking. So they can understand why that's an essential part of the.
Right. I think Councilmember Schwenk actually just, just touched on it. Parking is an asset and much of it's owned by the city. And right now it's being given away for free and for infinite, infinite amounts of time. So as you move towards, as the demand grows in the district and the competition for parking spaces increases, you move towards, the, the first step is to move toward timed parking. So you get people to circulate. They can't just stay there forever without, you know, you know, essentially having to move. Or, and then you move to timed metered parking where they have to pay. So if they want to stay there, they have to pay for it. And that's, and that's, that's just typical. I mean, we see that all over in every downtown, everywhere we go. It's just managing it. It's getting people, it's giving them the incentive to circulate and give up those prime, prime spaces. And, and in terms of the, the employees, that's a good example because a lot of them are parking right on the street in front of the business. Well, they wouldn't park there on the, you'd take that prime spot if, you know, they, it was timed parking or if, if they had to pay for their eight-hour shift. It, it's just, it's just a matter of making the parking more efficient and, and actually making it work for people that are coming down and circulating around. It's not just to, it's not just to, to, to charge for parking. It's, it, you know, in the past, like Mary Ann said, when there was no one down here, there's no need to charge for parking.
Yeah.
Cause there's plenty of parking. But when it becomes a competition, you have to manage that to get it to circulate, to get it to become more efficient. And, you know, that, that's primarily the.
I call that the musical chairs effect, right? It's where they circle around and there's one chair left, but at least that chair is vacant now. So that people have a chance to, you know, have a chance to park there.
And that's, that's not a perfect, it's not perfect. I mean, Councilmember Ron's right. I mean, that's not the total answer. It's just a answer. It's an answer to manage what you have already. It doesn't increase your supply. It makes it a little more efficient. But as demand continues to rise, that's still not going to, that's still, you're not going to be able to raise the price so high when the competition is increasing to that point where, you know, nobody even wants to come down because the parking is so expensive. Then you have, you really do have to think about adding supply in the, the parking structures and, and where it's located and, and all of that. So.
Excellent.
Questions or comment, Matt?
I was just gonna.
Oh, you're not done, Jess?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, just the last thing. So, you know, just one of the things as even just as a new council member, I'm still learning. And thank you so much for that, Luke, because I think that gives people a perspective who are time chiming in and who has, who have no clue as far as with the parking and understanding. So thank you. Cause we sat down and you explained everything to me in our last meeting. So the biggest thing is, is I think just as council members, we need to just remember that as much as we want that big vibrant Old Town, we still want to make sure that we are still keeping it family-centered and geared as well. And I think that's really important because the most of our constituents want that. They want to be able to bring their families to Temecula, to be able to raise their families and also come to Old Town. But, you know, obviously still enjoy the, the vibrancy of the, of the farmer's market, to be able to come down to the park that we built. You know, there's lots of areas that our families can really come down, but we want to make sure that it's also, it's not turning into Los Angeles.
Well, a lot of the events are family events. I mean, a lot of them are family events.
Exactly. So it's just keeping that, that's still a small town, but big love town. I don't know. I just, I just, you know, we, I know we don't want to grow huge, but we want to be vibrant. And I think there's that kind of that difference to just make sure that we're doing that. So, thank you.
Now, Matt?
Yeah, no, I mean, excellent point. And that's, I think that's kind of where we need to sort of focus our, our, our planning effort. Because, you know, you, you know, Councilmember Alexander brings up the, the cost piece, which is, you know, think about that as a massive culture shift for our residents and businesses to, to be able to adjust to, right? And I know there's a phasing in of timed parking and everything else, but you know, I think, I mean, we're all residents too. The idea of, of having to charge parking to folks to come down to, you know, participate in the, you know, chalk art on the sidewalks or whatever. I mean, that's, that's going to be, that's going to be a real tough thing to sell. And, and a lot of folks, you know, feel like they're paying enough taxes already as, as it is. So this is just, you know, another, another, you know, another issue of, of, of concern. So I think however we approach this, you know, this is going to, this isn't an easy conversation. And, you know, Luke, I think you said it perfectly, is that, you know, we're giving away an incredibly valuable asset for free for unlimited amounts of time, right? So we either have to figure out how we as a city create some sort of mechanism to subsidize that or, you know, create that mechanism to charge for it. But either way, you know, this is now a premium in Old Town. And if we want to keep that character of what we all envision Old Town to be, these, these next couple of decisions and how we move forward are going to be pretty critical.
And, and it was intentional, again, to repeat, it was intentional to make it an incentive to come to Old Town. You know, it was easy, it was convenient, you didn't have to pay for parking. But yes, we've reached the point of, we're closely reaching the point of diminishing returns. And that's what you were talking about, Jessica. We want to keep it safe, but then we, we get so successful that we've lost sight of, you know, what the original goals were. So it's a definitely a balancing act. But I, I've heard consensus from everyone that we need to move forward and you have some direction as to the things that the, the council members would like to see in that plan. So do you have enough to move forward now, Luke, do you think?
I, I, I think I do. I don't know if Aaron has anything to add, but I, I think it's, you know, we had an, an idea of the scope and, and we'll, we'll expand it to encompass all of the comments that we heard here tonight. and, and we'll, uh, we'll expand it to encompass all of the comments that we heard here tonight.
Okay, um, any final comments, council members?
Madam Mayor. I'm not sure I'm clear. So, um, can we, can we kind of just, um, sum up the consensus here on what we're not doing? I heard not interested in the study and then I heard study, but focused study on, uh, certain elements. And, um, so it's still a little fuzzy with me. Maybe Luke has a better handle on it.
We, we have to have a study. I mean, are we all agreed that there need, there definitely needs to be a, a revised study so we can get a better handle? And I think that the me- the mechanisms and the methods that, uh, under which the study will be conducted are going to be different than they were in two thousand nineteen. And I think that's what you were talking about, Matt.
Yes.
Right, okay, okay, so, um, go ahead, Luke, why don't you tell us what you think, what you think you're doing?
Yeah, so, uh, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, it's a usage study as it, as it was before, but it needs to focus on, um, um, and, and provide clear direction on, on how we make it more convenient. Um, be speci- very specific about that. And that it needs to start looking at, um, uh, more detailed strategies on, on how to, to add supply now. So what I heard was like the, the freeway analogies that we need to start thinking about building it now so we're not at a hundred percent by the time we actually start thinking about building a parking structure. And how do we, how do we move that forward? What do we need to do? What are the, what are the specific funding sources? Um, and, and kind of focus on it from that angle as well and not leave that as an afterthought as a ten-year, ten-year-plus idea. How do we, how would we need to, if we wanted to pull the trigger on that today, exactly what will we, what will we do?
Okay, um, Aaron, are you, is that better?
Well, I guess that's a question for the full council, is that?
I didn't see anybody's hand, so.
Is that good?
We good? Yeah. Oh, Jessica, was that a thumbs up or a, okay, that's a thumbs up.
Okay, thank you.
Are we good then? All right. Okay, so that was business item number fifteen. So we're down to city managers, report anything?
Um, Madam Mayor, uh, just, just one item. I, I think I have a slide, if we could throw it up there real quick. We have set a date, we're saving the date, uh, June fifteenth, uh, four P M. At, uh, we will have a park dedication and a overdue, uh, retirement recognition for former mayor, former council member, uh, Mike Nigar. And so, uh, we know all of you will be out there. We invite the community that are, that are interested in, in coming out. Um, but anyway, June fifteenth, four P M, we'll be outside and we will cut a ribbon on, on the, uh, rededication of that park with the new name and, uh, also celebrate, uh, twenty-three years of, uh, Mike's service to the city of Temecula. So, uh, thank you for that.
And I, I love the fact that we waited so that we could actually, uh, you know, give him the kind of celebration that he, that, I mean, his many years of service deserves. So I think that's great. Peter, anything?
I have no report tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right, and I am looking at an adjournment, uh, for Tuesday, June the eighth. And I'll take a motion in a second.
Have a adjournment.
And.
Second.
And I say, we stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Great meeting.